I'd like to call this September 2016, 2023 regular meeting in Ross County Hospital. If you'll stand for the pleasure of the agents following up on your statements. If you will remember the time that Mr. Ron Francis dead and he's in the hospital, I would appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the rule of law, the Constitution, the Constitution of the United States of America. For the minutes. For September 12th, 2023, regular session and 2023 September 12th board session. Do I have a free or a message to agree?
Mr. Mayor, are we going to go to the pool, the pool on the agenda course?
I have the agenda, but is any of this in the agenda? I've heard of them.
Um, I have an agenda talk. So in the last council meeting, I am asked to, uh, descend the proclamation for the, uh, several people have dedicated during the process of petition for multilingual ballot that motivated the city of Morro make a historical decision. And I also sent the list from individual to Mr. Mayor and, uh, reminding, uh, about, uh, the, uh, the proclamation in, uh, present in this meeting, but it's not in the agenda. So I'm going to say, I'm going to say. Thì trong bữa họp kỳ trước, tôi có đề nghị với thành phố thị trường để trao tặng công hàm với nhân những người đã có trong cái việc làm chính mình thôi. Nếu tham cho cái máng phiếu bầu đang ngôn ngữ thì nó cũng có trên bài là sẽ trao tặng công hàm này cho những người có tên, có tên dân gian như những người đã có con bóng bóng lớn trong cái việc để giúp cho thành phố Morro rất ra được cái quyết định, ra được cái quyết định lịch sử đó là có lá phiếu bầu đang ngôn ngữ. Thì cái thông tin này, cái nhan sắc của nó được nhân nhân cũng đã được gợi ý cho thành phố thị trường để với hy vọng là sẽ được trao tặng công hàm đó hội hành cuộc họp ngày hôm nay. Nhưng mà bây giờ trên cái chương trình của cuộc họp, chương trình lịch sử của cuộc họp không có cái thông tin này. So Mr. Mayor, I would like to know what is the process to give the proclamation? And whether we value, uh, regardless of honors, though individuals, uh?
I can add a motion to add to the agenda, Mr. Anderson.
Um, but if we add in on the agenda, where the proclamation, we don't have, you have it prepared? So we can get the two, we can present to you?
You're asking to have it on the agenda or you're asking to have it on the next meeting for the agenda? So do you have the time for your motion?
So I'll ask before I can make, uh, make the motion. I think I want to understand the procedure of giving the proclamation. So could you, um, for, I have two question. First question is that are we going to give proclamation to honor though individual? Second, what is the procedure of getting it done? First, um, I formally made a statement during the meet, during the meeting last two weeks ago. And I also probably put the email to the list of the individual as well as the bullet point that goes to be in the proclamation, but it's still not on the agenda.
Can I add it to the agenda?
But if we add to the agenda tonight, how could we honor though individual? We don't have the actual, uh, proclamation prepared. We don't have the enhancement.
I understand. If you want to add it to the next council meeting, now we're able to.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Uh, thank you for that clarity case and I am about making the, uh, uh, motion. But before that, I also have the second question. Uh, it's also about the proclamation as well. So last year, the community among so many individual, among so many organizations dedicated to put together a, a moon festival event in two weeks and a total of three and a half thousand people came. That also motivated the city to adopt the moon festival into the annual event. And just like, um, and it also happened in the last council meeting. I also formally proposed to give the proclamation for though individuals and the organization when, uh, during the moon festival event that the first, the moral first moon festival event on October the first. So I'm asking, are we going to have that? So I'm sorry, I'm going to translate what I just say in regular English. Hơn cuộc họp trước, lúc hai tuần trước, tôi cũng có trình trình ra là việc ra có những cuộc họp cá thể, những cuộc họp cá thể đã đã giúp cho thành phố là cái trung thu cộng đồng trong vòng năm tuần. Thì cái, cái chương trình trung thu này đã có mấy ngàn người tới tham dự. Và chính vì điều đó đã khiến hết thành phố, nhờ thành phố Morro nhằm làm cái tết trung thu vào cái, cái chương trình hàng năm. Thì để biểu diễn cái tinh thần cho những cá thể, cho những cuộc họp cá thể đã giúp, là cái tết trung thu thành công như vậy và để giúp cho thành phố đưa ra quyết định là làm cái chương trình lễ hội văn hóa này hoặc chương trình hàng năm. Tôi cũng có yêu cầu là đưa ra làm cái, cái công hàm nhân nhược của những người này. Và tôi hỏi thành phố thị trường là chương trình này có thể là, có thể đưa cái công hàm này vào trong cái chương trình tết trung thu, uh, hàng năm, tết trung thu vào ngày một, ngày tháng mười hai, thật không? So, uh, and I, again, I'm relating a question to Mr. Mayor about the proclamation given away to individuals and organizations during the moon festival event.
Do I hear a motion?
Okay. So I'm making another main motion to give the proclamation. Ah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm going to make, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make motion, uh, motion to add on the agenda, the decision of giving proclamations to individuals who have dedicated during the petition, the petition for bilingual, okay, multilingual language ballot that motivated the city of Morro to make the historical decision that I have in the multilingual ballot.
Do I hear that? Do you have a motion, Mr. Anderson?
I'm sorry, I'm in a kind of feeling here. So, uh, cái, cái, cái đề xứng vừa rồi và có cái đề ra cho ta thính cầu là sẽ có trao tặng công hàm để nhân nhân cho những cá thể đã có đóng góp lớn trong việc xin chỉn nghĩa thư để có lá phiếu bầu đang ngôn ngữ. Và việc đó đã, đã thúc đẩy thành phố ra một quyết định lịch sử đó là có lá phiếu bầu đang ngôn ngữ trong sách kỳ bầu cử tới. My, my second objection is to, I make a motion to have, to, to give the proclamation in honor individuals and organizations that helped to build the community moon festival last year that motivated the city of Morro to hold a culture event to celebrate the culture of the majority of people in this city. Do ra thính cầu là sẽ có, I'm sorry, I'm making a motion to, to give the proclamation during moon festival event on October 1st to honor individuals and organizations last year that helped to build the successful community moon festival that motivated the city of Morro to adopt moon festivals into the annual culture event. Let's then, uh, do that thính cầu là nhân nhân những cá thể và những cơ sở, ở thương nghiệp đã giúp, đã giúp cho cái chương trình tết trung thu cộng đồng năm oái thành công và điều đó thúc đẩy thành phố Morro nhằm làm tết trung thu, thúc đẩy thành phố Morro tổ chức tết trung thu vào hàng năm. Và coi đó là chương trình văn hóa và tuổi niên.
Do I hear that? All those who pay a seat, Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Miss name?
Aye.
Miss name? Miss call?
Aye.
Motion carry. For the minutes, September 12th, regular session and board session. Do I hear a motion to the group? Do I hear that?
Second.
All those who pay a seat, Miss name?
Aye.
Miss name?
Aye.
Miss call? And Miss name?
May the, may most of now reported currently the way it would recall.
Presentations. While Police Department recognizing Lieutenant Murphy by Lieutenant Chuck Harrison.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mark Woodall, Major, uh, Police Operations Division. Uh, this is Chuck, Lieutenant Chuck Harrison, my friend and colleague. Forty-seven years, we grew up together, lieutenant with Henry County Police Department. He is the Governor's Office Highway Safety Representative for the Metro Atlanta Traffic Enforcement Network. So he's here on behalf of the Governor's Office to present an award to Lieutenant Murphy.
Agreed, everyone. Uh, throughout the year, we've done multiple campaigns and Lieutenant Murphy has went over and above, over and above the call of duty to assist us. Uh, Madden has seven counties, I call it Madden because of Metro Atlanta Traffic Enforcement. And we have seven counties with approximately about sixty agencies in those counties. And so I'd like to give this award to Lieutenant Murphy because I can call him and say, hey, I need some help. Let's do this campaign. Let's do this campaign. He's like, let's do it, come on. So I really appreciate all your help that you've done to the network and I just really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Proud of him. Always happy to go out there and keep our streets safe. Um, distracted driving is a big pet peeve of mine. People on phones, people not wearing the seatbelts, just want to keep our citizens safe. It's good to reiterate everybody the depth of this, uh, that there, that the recognition, the depth this involves is the coordination of, uh, a multitude of agencies where we get on I-75 and, uh, detect and deter and cite offenders. So with the last time we did this, we had, we've had probably over twenty agencies with Georgia State Patrol, making, making them bid county sheriffs, uh, Cobb County Sheriff's Office, uh, all over the state came to our city and got on our portion of interstate and we made a difference and hopefully save lives. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Well, five-year recognition for duty days, five years service, and promotion to the rank of lieutenant. Evening, Mayor, council members. Citizens, set. Uh, Rick Davidson will be receiving his five-year service pen and will be promoted to lieutenant tonight. Um, Rick, go come on up and stand here. We're blessed to have Rick's daughter and granddaughter with us tonight. Uh, they grew up out from Nashville, Tennessee. So first, we'll do the, uh, service pen. Uh, when I was reviewing Rick's resume in 2018, when he applied for jobs, it brought back memories of when I decided to apply for a fire fighter job here tomorrow in 2004. Because at the age of forty-one, I decided finally what I wanted to do when I grew up and I was to be a full-time firefighter. I've been a volunteer for twenty-four years and Rick had also been a volunteer for a few years, few years, but not received the training to be able to serve as a firefighter. Two major differences between me and Rick, though. You'd have to go to fire school and he was several years north of forty-one when he decided what he wanted to do. He completed fire school within four months and has continued progress over the last five years. He's taken about twenty more classes at, uh, the Georgia Fire Academy since then. Uh, he was already advanced EMT, working for a private ambulance service when he came to us. He's a captain with the Antioch Volunteer Fire Department in Forts in Georgia. If you don't know where that is, just go down eighty-five. And just keep driving like forever and we'll finally, finally get there around Columbus somewhere. Uh, he serves as their training officer down there. He's an adjunct instructor at the Georgia Fire Academy. He said, go down, just days off and he just served with fire control and things like that. Uh, he's an Air Force veteran and served as a firefighter briefly back in the late nineteen nineties or something like that. Uh, he's reliable, he's positive, he's trustworthy, he provides exceptional customer service to his patients. He loves teaching our community about fire safety and he always puts Morro in a positive light. Rick, thank you for your service today morning. Hope to see you tomorrow and congratulations on your five-year penalty. Thank you. This certificate is awarded to Rick Davidson for his commitment, dedication, and selfishness towards the contributions of five years of service to the city of Morro and the Morro Fire Department. We present you with this award as recognition by the American Council, City Council, 2016. All right, and now for the lieutenant's promotion. When we're deciding due to promote, we look at their history tomorrow, their knowledge, skills, abilities, and their potential to lead others. We have an expectation that the individual we promote will step up and lead. Things don't always work out like we expect, but I'm confident with the promotion of Rick. We've made the right choice. We've had a few promotions this year, so I'll further requirements and studs. I'm going to go a little different route tonight. Um, occasionally people we have contact with will express a gratitude for job well done. And that's very true for Rick. So I want to read an excerpt from a couple of letters I've got in the past about Rick. You know, Rick's only been here five years, but he's definitely had no bad to receive. So this is the one I got in, uh, 2020. And it says, uh, hello, Chief Swann. During the fall semester, a student was in crisis and attempted to poison herself at Lake Hall of Lake State University campus. When the first responders arrived, they were greatly impressed by the care and compassion of those gentlemen with the last name Davidson provided the young lady. When he entered the apartment, he immediately validated the feelings of his student and began chatting with her about her choices that night and potential. He shared his story of his wife's recently passing, while perfectly related hardships that show ladies' term struggle, which so appropriately captured all of our attention in this space. I've seen Davidson a few more times on campus, for instance, and caught glimpses of him when assisting a student witness to a fatal labor hall parking lot crash on January 6th, 2020. I made a note to make sure I reached out. I so appreciate Davidson coming in and providing such care to my students. He is so appreciated by the residents' life team at Clayton State University. All the best as the Assistant Director of Housing and Residents' Life. Rick performed at this level, they recall. Uh, this is just a blip on the radar of what he does. He's compassionate, empathetic, and truly cares about each person in context. Then in 2022, I received this letter. Chief Swann, I'd like to express my sincerest gratitude for your department's assistance with Clayton County Fire Emergency Services, most recent Lieutenant Assessment Center. He graciously provided personnel that represented your department exceptionally. The manner in which he carried himself portrayed the utmost professionalism and I wish to commend him for his service. I am genuinely grateful and would like you to know in a remarkable way, Firefighter Richard Davidson, for all. Again, this was an all-day event where he volunteers time to help another firefighter. Both examples speak to his character, and character is a really big deal in leadership. So, Rick, without further ado, having satisfied all the requirements, you're hereby promoted to the rank of lieutenant.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome to take some pictures. Um, and what we'll do, usually what we do is we just stand up for a minute and take the pictures with your family, for people over here. And, uh, in the actual, for, 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 thank you. They're precious.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Our high school, World Language School.
I would like to give out the board's.
Actually, it's, uh.
Um, in fewer words, it.
So I'll be very happy if I can say in a few words.
Today, we want to recognize the following students for their academic success in the Spanish language class and we want to thank the city of Morro for the opportunity to give all to recognize the following students, Liliana Rodriguez.
I'm going to read one, and I think they're all going to be very similar. Ms. Martinez.
Ms. Martinez, Liliana.
We know that first part of the document. That the city of Morro and the World Language Department of our high school are delighted to announce the recognition of this student during Hispanic heritage for outstanding achievement as recognized by the mayor and council September 2016, 2023. Congratulations.
The next student is Odutola Poluati Milore.
And this one also says the same thing. Um, city of Morro, World Language Department, our high school are delighted to announce the recognition of this student during Hispanic heritage for outstanding achievement recognized by the mayor and city council September 2016, 2023.
Um, the third student is not here, but I can resist.
And you're welcome to take pictures up here. But we just stand slow.
Kaylin Diaz. Kaylin Diaz, yes.
If you're standing, I can stand with you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning, renovation of African City Tech Design LLC, credit capita. The request from Mayor Council condition of use is approved by the. Ms. Martin, to remind you of the other issue, so I'll leave the first name, so I will formally introduce her as the Planning and Zilling Director, Ms. Martin Tracey.
I would like to have just said, my last name has been, uh, my name is Madonna, she is here. And I like that, I think I earned it. Anyway, thank you, Mayor Council, good to be here. What this staff member thinks is an exciting project that's coming to the city and hopefully going to see, depends on who votes tonight. It's for 1420 South Lake Parkway. That is the, we had hoped we'd get popular, say, first ones, as well as, uh, those will be, but after this, an application for conditional use in the general business is only for a Holiday Inn Express, brand new, fifty-five square, uh, fifty-five thousand square foot hotel, um, four stories. They have submitted a site plan yet, but, um, now called part of the construction process should be an approval. I want to also mention that your friend, Captain Peters, is the applicant. He is not here this evening because he very courteously backed out because he has COVID. However, his given home is here to represent the Buddhism Association, Mr. Kate Peterson of Catholics, and can answer any questions you might have. I can't make room, this is a public venue, so we'll be.
The video that we played on the slide has something to do with setting up, it was done, maybe, so this is, uh, is not there. But it's related to Holiday Inn Express, and everybody wants number 1420, this is on the six point two five, maybe, it was right beside Holiday Inn Express, and the property's very, very popular, the property's been around for a while, so please.
And it's been, they took what now, fifteen? Fifteen years.
Since we're not having, uh, loose show.
Yes. Actually, I had not prepared for him to give a presentation. You had in your package pretty much what can be expected. They, it will be the current standard model for the, uh, how they've been spread for the, um, the exterior.
And then I see the chairman of the Planning and Zilling Board is on the council, and you had an account.
Yes, yes, he does.
You know I love him.
This, this one, he's quite to me, um, he had a lot to say, even though he grew up here, and I think Rick, he shared some of that also. I think that this will be so, um, again, proposed, pretty excited about it. It's appropriate for the chair to give recognition.
Good evening, Mayor Council, citizen staff. First of all, I'd like to say, um, this is a great day for us to be standing before the Mayor Council and recommending approval of a conditional, uh, use application for Holiday Inn Express to come to our city. I tell you that, and I tell people frequently, that, uh, we're on the cusp of greatness in the city. And with the building of the new convention center, uh, convocation center, I should say, and the older education is bringing to the city, there are going to be more opportunities coming to, to partner with business partners here in the city, and the city should embrace them. Is there going to be change that's going to impact us? Yes, there is. There's going to be more traffic, more noise in the area, but the city has an opportunity to develop. And with Holiday Inn Express willing to come in and plant roots on our grounds, that's a great day. So I'm recommending to the Mayor and Council that they recommend the approval of the conditional use applications to build a new Holiday Inn Express, Holiday Inn Express at 1420 South Park, South Lake Parkway. Also want to say that we've had some great things happen in this city. We really have. If you just look at, look back over the course of this administration, uh, some great things have happened in the city. Cities become debt-free, we pay it off our bonds, we bring new re- uh, retail, uh, businesses into the city. The vacant retail spaces are being filled and new opportunities. We should embrace that. It's all because of religion, and it's because of leadership. You have to have a vision and a plan and leadership to execute that plan. And I commend this Mayor and Council for a job well done.
Yes, so, um, wanting to ask, so I, I see the floor plan, I see the exterior prototypes that I think we're probably familiar with, that Holiday Inn Express on the book. Um, what I was not clear on was, um, will this have a meeting event space, or is this strictly going to be, um, rooms?
I, I don't want to do the answer to that. I apologize, I'm not doing the answer, I'm not asked, but it's a pleasure to have, um, yeah, his hotel, typically, the city already tells, um, all of the thousands of people to come to Holiday Inn Express.
Just, just a curiosity, if, if there can be some follow-up, just to kind of let us know, um, what that building is going to comprise of, if it is going to be beyond this. Um, and my other question, um, it's saying here in the conditional use summary, the remaining acreage is planned for the development of another combo suite hotel. Each hotel must contain a separate conditional use approval. So on that six acre site, this property, this building is going to take up how much of that site, so that how many additional acres are going to be remaining to be developed?
We haven't finished the total cycling yet, and we'll do that during the, the progress of the city, but it's probably going to be about equal, equal size, uh, for the two sites, and the thought process is that hopefully the Holiday Inn goes according to plan, it's very successful, or the success of the city that's y'all out here, and then we'll move forward in a second, and we can come back and report it all.
Okay. Um, and so with that being said, is there, I see this is under the IHG brand.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm Kimpton fan, um, yeah, loyal to the Kimpton brand, IHG brands. I, I think this is kind of exciting. Um, do we have any idea of the additional acreage, um, where the hotel might be?
Probably with the IHG brand, that's, that's Mr. Fady's, um, preferred brand as well, I guess, is a fair way to put it, so that would be what I'd anticipate, another IHG type hotel.
IHG type.
Brand.
Right, right.
I don't remember what that's under the IHG brand.
Kimpton.
There you go. We'll take notes on that one, too.
Pass that word along. Yeah, that, that would be a great opportunity for us, um, that boutique level hotel, um, especially that location, that condition which is coming along, uh, and then the convocation center, so we will have the opportunity to provide different, um, experience. Um, a bit of a good word.
I, I will do that.
The Kimpton red.
I'll, I'll make notes.
Thank you, that's my question. Ms. Clark.
Oh, thank you. This is very exciting, and, uh, when do you think we're going to expect it to be open? I mean, roughly, I know that right now you haven't, you don't have any secret plan yet, what, 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 when you expect it to be?
Eight, eight to twelve months, I would say.
Oh, wow. Same thing, doesn't matter.
Risky.
Fairly correct, right. Everything that's water with the structure should be there.
Well, that, that's what I wanted to ask as well, so you can answer that.
Ms. Turner.
You have excellent close on school, thank you.
A couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
Um, first one is in your proposal for, as part of the package, you, you showed the different visuals of what the Holiday Inn Express, uh, somewhere between 2006, 2007, 2013. And so you've got a really updated product, where, you know, that's, these volumes, when you're coming off the highway, you know, it does look like a gated, you know, property. It looks very current, uh, which we're very thankful for. Uh, and the second one is, is a point of information. You, you got six point two five acres, you've got two potential buildings, um, and traditionally Holiday Inn Express doesn't have a restaurant component to it. However, we know the adjacent property owners exceptionally well. So if, if you just move your building over just a little bit, and you can create yourself a pad site development, um, I can get you to partner with Harley Davidson, because they have adjacent property which is about five point two acres, uh, fifty-two thousand square foot building, and there's some requirements from Harley Davidson to solve that upgrade that building. It may make sense to, to, you've got plenty of interest in you guys because you've got two curriculums right there, but we also know the people up they go from. Uh, so that's going to be an interesting parcel, um, but it, it, it also allows you to have, in other words, a viable piece of, you know, these individuals have something to do with, um, but you might be able to collectively, you know, park a little building in that, so it's, it's an independent player, right? You've got somebody who can make decisions on your own, not talking huge corporate here. Uh, the brand itself is corporate, but the individual is, is something we talk to. Uh, we can put the people in there to make that happen, and that would be beneficial for everybody to maximize, you know, the parking, ultimately, the adoption. Uh, so we appreciate that very much, and, uh, welcome to having time, and, uh, could not be more blessed.
Thank you.
But let's go ahead and get just a little group.
May I ask, uh, Councilman Knight, are you in favor of having meeting space, or would you prefer?
Yeah, I actually spoke to Mr. Capita, and there is a small, it's still based on the original plans, there was a small meeting space designed for fifteen to twenty people to take that, nothing longer than that, discussion around.
That, that to me, I think, would be appropriate, considering so much of the development that's gone on.
Yes.
It would be an amenity for those in the hotel, not necessarily a large space.
Right. Right. I get that, I just wanted to, in the direction to, and could I make a compliment to the people attending? Um, you heard Mary Landall talking about adjacent properties to, to this particular site and the possibilities. When, uh, Mr. Capia, Capo Capia, Capia, uh, when he first came, he had a totally different , uh, in mind that was not consistent with the direction that the city is taking. And because Mary Landall spends his entire Tuesday here at the meeting with people, developers, citizens, um, potential council people, um, he, we were able to get a Holiday Inn Express. So, um, I, I just, I appreciate the time that you put in to make this happen after watching that, that piece of property, otherwise was a maintenance issue for code enforcement for over fifteen years, so, uh, I appreciate the extra personal time and commitment that you put in to making this happen, if in actual, oh, yes.
See, I like that.
Mayor, if I may, uh, this night, Mr. Fady responded, the city manager's track will be a small conference, about, up to about forty people, but not a conference center type. And Mayor was also wrong on my answer to the construction timing, more about eighteen to twenty months, so, sorry to, sorry to, uh, lengthen your expectations, everyone wanted to raise them.
We'll try to vote before we're named, put your name on the vote. So the, uh, Planning and Zilling Board recommends the application, the approval.
Oh, thanks.
Well, this is the better. Comments from the citizens?
I think that's a great idea, and hey, you're bringing something new to this community.
What did you name, sir?
Dennis Whitehead.
Thank you. And I, I did attend the planning building, so.
She is our, uh, her redevelopment board general.
Yes. And, uh, I think it's, it's a wonderful thing, we're moving forward. Um, Marlboro was stagnant for so long, so now that we're seeing, you know, change, and it's, it's good. There's nothing as constant as change, so it's great. Thank you.
It may be, it used to be.
No comments?
Before.
Of the adjournments closed?
No, time ago.
Do I have a motion to approve the application, and after the recommendation from Planning and Zilling Board, is it yes, or a motion to approve the recommendation?
Mayor, before we go into the vote, can I ask, what in the process, um, approving the zoning, we need to do a hearing or we don't?
We just did.
Right, we did, we advertised that hearing, we put, put the hearing to public for people to know that we're making this easy and changing zoning, whether a lot of crying on that. I'm not so excited about the great opportunity to make the change, but I just want to make sure we follow the legal stuff.
Absolutely, yeah. Before, before our conditional use, I reread the state law has been advertised within, with, at minimum fifteen days prior to the hearings, and at some forty-five days has been advertised in a legal bargain. And also because this was applied for by an applicant other than the city, I posted signage, which is still there at the property, pretty much, if they, this hearing, and the hearing of public, uh, and that is only, we're advertising, so we've got that covered.
So we did advertise, put the post and the property?
Posted the property and, and, and actually, granted, advertising more than required.
So we did also put the advertising on legal.
Absolutely.
Like you say.
And it's a little trickery now, so because of the timing and going to execute the process, uh, Planning is only agreed to reschedule their meeting so that we could get it as soon as possible, and it had to be extended so to have that fifteen days prior to their meeting, so yes, good looking at.
So in the future, something like that, we are trying to get engaged with the community and actually correct. I would say, uh, we also should put something like that on city's Facebook to let people know what about changing in zoning, that's important, uh, yeah, but you get it on the league. It's not only about legal process, but shall we communicate with the community.
We have a motion, well, here's Sam. Motion, probably second, all those who care, say aye. Ms. Nick.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Karen.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Senator, the board.
Thank you all very much.
And general comments from the audience. Wait a second, wait a second. The video that we're going to play during work session is going to be the first comment, it's going to be comment from the city manager or whoever else is playing this thing, um...
We'll wait and see.
There you go.
Yeah.
Somebody want to walk us through this?
Sure. Uh, apologies, this is just showing the, uh, this is a city rover, they've got it actually attached to the trash truck, so you see as the sanitation trucks moving through, like we're discussing, it's like a track that, a dash cam to be along.
So that would be that?
No. Oh, man, play this one again, I don't know, that's good. Uh, so you see them coming out, they're fixing the bottles. This is just the Oregon city in this, in the state of Oregon, but there's a picture of what you see, the QR codes, like you had your package, it actually has a map, the Google map, and, and it, same kind of work where it was in your package, and then it also downloads to the actual software where you can track it on, like they were doing on the screen there. And what he's basically is relaying is that it's been a godsend for them to be able to fix the bottles a lot easier, identify them quicker, and be able to take care of them in the more time they manage. See, I know we had a question earlier, um, on Highway 54, there, we picked up some on there, we report those to DOT, because the State Department of Transportation is the one who does that, taxpayers or City of Marlboro pay their taxes to the state, state's the ones who's supposed to fix the state routes that come through there, but we do forward those, that information to them as well. Without the, without the audio, it's kind of, kind of weird, but, um, that's the gist of the, of the video.
Excellent. I can receive that. Um, and they have some visual. Um, and then you have some visual presentations here as well, we have a lot of different questions. Other comments from the audience? Go ahead.
My concern about this stuff is I don't understand because there's problems already. Do we need new technology to figure out? You know, it's like, come in this room, that lights out, you know? We don't need newer technology to figure things out. How long is it gonna take to fix what we do have problems with?
We had, uh, I don't know if you're in here earlier, but we had ninety-six incidents that were reported in the first month. Twenty-two of those were potholes that were our responsibility, that were fixed immediately. It grades your your potholes on a tiered system, so some of them may not even be visible to the naked eye, but it shows a problem with that. Um, so it lets us get ahead of it a little bit earlier. So some of those are degrading that are happening, and we're able to be more preventive on it. And some of the ones, I mean, we drive them all the time, we rely on the citizens to report. Um, and our police department, fire department are out there all the time, too, if they don't always relate it because they're going to do something else aside from legal problems, report those to public works. So it just makes more co- more continuity in what we're doing. And it's a very simple, very low cost for us to do that and to map it and to show where we have fixes. And if we have continuous problems, we may have something we mentioned contact engineering on to actually get a correction on and second the program.
Any comments? Mr. Jerry.
Uh, I was at the planning and zoning meeting, and it was very, and there were a lot of questions asked then. But, uh, talking about the legal aspect of it, Clayton News Daily is the legal paper to advertise what's going on in the Clayton County period, cities, whatever. And I did see it in there twice, and when I saw it, I put it on my calendar. So you can get a regular subscription or you can get an online subscription and you will have access to information like that. That is the legal document.
Any comments? Very much comments from the city council. Ms. Trent.
Mr. Mayor, I will be speaking fast, uh, and the way is this call from Jasmine and Ross, and I'd be glad to keep that in order.
Ms. Knight.
Um, congratulations to all those who were present today, um, and the proposal as well. Um, I appreciate Mr. Congress, the words that you spoke this evening. Um, thank you for your leadership on the planning and zoning board. Um, we've been waiting a long time for, uh, jumping off stage twice this, so we are, we're excited as well. Um, the opportunities and the possibilities that we can move forward with that will work together, uh, to level up Marl, uh, in the metro area. Um, and one point that I did want to kind of reiterate, um, I appreciate leadership, um, and the distinctiveness of the leadership and the administration that we have. Um, I I was aware that this particular developer wanted to offer us something that we did not necessarily want. Uh, and so it it requires, uh, vision, it requires leadership, it requires knowledge and skill, um, at this stage of the game for us to move in the right direction. So I do appreciate that.
Mr. Clark. Also, I'd like to congratulate you, uh, for this department and, uh, by the bottom, for individual, local market, and eleven nine. And thank you for everybody for coming out tonight and, um, Holiday Inn Express, they do a great thing in, you know, long town. I'm very excited about it. Thank you for all what we do.
Ms. Dean.
Um, I would also like to say, um, congratulations to our staff, um, Lieutenant and, uh, uh, for his, um, service, both Lieutenant and Harley-Davidson, for the service and, uh, promotion. Um, I don't know, he does it with all the different jobs that he's going to, I'm very able to get into this one. But I also would like to say thank you to, um, Marty and the Planning and Zoning Board, because that is the first phase of businesses coming into the city. And, uh, with Marty and our Planning and Zoning Board, uh, Chairman, Mr., what's his name, Nancy? We do a great job and, uh, you know, the meetings are conducted and, uh, you know, attended, uh, by citizens and, uh, uh, just want you all to know that, uh, we appreciate what you all do because you're the first, uh, face into, uh, businesses coming into the city. Um, I also like to say, um, that we have sitting here, uh, a person that was honored this weekend for a humanitarian award, and that's our mayor. Under that, I'm gonna let him have his last word on that.
Mr. and Mrs. Wilson, good to see you, good to see you, Oscar. Ms. Trent.
Well, congratulations, uh, uh, the police and fire department, and also for normal high school. And also congratulations to Mayor for the, the award that you have turned to him. Um, and I thank you also, and just a thanks to the council for, um, making this easy enough, um, giving the programming to, uh, the people who make the contribution into the one of the event that went on becomes the event. And I also, so, so it's going to be given through the, um, the more festival event, I'd like to get, uh, the staff to, um, I will be providing a list of individuals and, um, and organizations that going to present, um, the, uh, programming and also going to give the time, um, the runtime of the event so we can, uh, invite the individual, uh, to the event for, um, for the hour. Um, Chúc mừng bên hội khách sạn và thủ quả cũng giống như là trường ờ trung học. Mở ờ, cũng chức môn học triều hùng đã được giải về à. Về, được giải về à. Giải về các cái cái lòng người các ông tốt. Và cũng cảm ơn toàn bộ ban hội đoàn của thành phố đã đồng ý để cho nhân danh những cá thể cũng như là những đoàn thể đã góp song sức vào tổ chức Tết Trung Thu bên ngoài. Và chương trình này thì sẽ, cái cái ghi biệt này sẽ được gọi đến những cá thể và những cái những đoàn thể này trong chương trình Tết Trung Thu vào ngày một tám tháng mười. Tôi sẽ nuôi nhăn sóc cho nhân viên của thành phố để chuẩn bị programming và tiêu cầu bên phía thành phố. Phân cấp cái thời gian lúc nào trong tận vải đó để mình có thể là thông báo với những cá thể và đoàn thể để họ có thể lên đúng chiều lề để được nhân danh. And I'm a master, uh, very excited in about, uh, the silent news to have family at the hotel, uh, right to the conference. And thank you for taking the zoning and the staff that worked together and that, um, that worked together and pushed it through, uh, and make the, um, the break recommended to the council. Tôi cũng cảm ơn nhân viên cũng thành phố cũng giống như là quan phòng ban về, ờ, bên bên bộ ban của về, lên em zone này. Công an, công an về kế hoạch và thông cùng đã làm việc tích cực để trong cái việc mà cái điều đáng về cái thiết sản. Để hóa được cái thiết sản kế ven, ờ, cái tham phần sẽ tới cái tổ chức các chương trình đại hội.
I'll keep mine brief. Um, we had an opportunity to introduce the young lady during the night to an audience, and obviously the most proud people that have been in Marlboro in a very long time. Uh, so the rice awards, the doctors, lawyers, entertainers, um, pretty much the best of the best in terms of what Metro Atlanta has to offer. And, you know, Dr. Carter, um, put on a pretty good presentation. Miss Dorothy has lived with Oscar over a lifetime for forty years. Um, you know, you've heard the story, but you haven't met the person. So here is a a lady that grew up in a time period where they would not recognize African-American women in a field. Um, would not recommend people for CEO positions, and she earned every credit that was, and she stood in her own right, when it was very complicated to do so. Um, over the years, she retired, and she's got several issues. And those many issues, um, we will all be there one day. And that's what we're reminded to agree with in the audience, that this is you. Um, and if this time of year today will be you in the future, and as you end up with older people, seniors, uh, living hardly in the same cases, um, there may not be a another person next to you when they tap that non-judicial foreclosure on the wall. Now, foreclosures, most of the time, people assume that you didn't pay something, and you go, okay. So basically, the story of kindness is seventy-one years old, that they got a a small loan from a major bank. Um, and it paid on a religiously for a decade. There's some fraudulent activity in her account that was well documented through the police department in Marl, um, as well as the financial institution itself. You know, there were some changes made to their address in terms of the building, post office box, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and in that same process, uh, the the bank, who also had a pension, received, you know, fifty times the amount of of the loan, so you look at payments with like a hundred dollars in them. So in the same bank, you have all of your checks, even deposit, if you know you have different things, and they foreclosed for a thousand sixty-one dollars. Her house was worth by a little under three hundred grand, it's over her own person, and they foreclosed and sold it on the courthouse steps for under forty-one thousand. Here's the part that gets interesting. If we, as a community, basically, for a tax foreclosure, you have the right to tell your house back. In a non-judicial foreclosure, you do not. So once she made it through the non-judicial foreclosure in January of twenty twenty-three, when we met Oscar and him on Tuesday night at five thirty, we come out of the court at eight thirty the next morning. The judicial foreclosure, but somebody else had it on her own. The judicial basically said, we're going to basically take your stock upon that, and we would take everything each of them and put it out on the curb. End of story. That's the rules. What we would submit, and the reason we brought this forward, was through a, a series of people, through disparate perseverance, we were able to change that outcome. And ultimately, the bank bought her house back and debited it to Ms. Wilson and Oscar, free. If you don't believe in God, you should, because this was handed out.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate that very much. The the other part of the conversation was, you know, a city has only so much to worry. I I assure you, when you tell the judge, I'm the mayor of Marlboro, it means nothing, okay? But it did cause him to blink, and he would blink, just said, we don't see this ever again, okay? So I'm sure they had to go, they did, they shot court, they went in the back. I'm sure somebody said, does the mayor of Marlboro have any judgment? The answer is no, okay? But what you have is guts. So you're able to, in a very short period of time, explain to a city judge, as to the judge Walker, that I have a memory care issue here. And the judge basically said, stand aside and ask Miss Dorothy a couple of questions. It was very clear that, while you had a really nice lady that was standing, she had some challenges. And the judge bought us ten days' time. Did that give us a continuous? Reset the calendar. And that bought us ten days. And in ten days, I promise you, not only this council, but almost everybody that we meet, we we turned over, we call, we we call congressmen, we call, we have, we call all these institutions saying, this is not right. And we're able to get it differently. Additionally, you have to look at it and say, have you got a different type of law? And we're going through a judicial foreclosure process. For those of you who don't know, non-judicial is that same newspaper you are, you advertise four weeks back as something you do not read. Attacking server doesn't require me to serve you, it allows me to basically take a piece of paper on the side of your house. That is it. So if you've got memory care issues, how are you actually notified? The answer is you are not, okay? In a judicial foreclosure process, you have to actually be served, that has to have that piece of paper in his hands. The judge could then look at that process and say, all right, the the bank is on a certain amount of money, maybe you're taking a certain amount of money. They could go through and still study how, the difference would be you would get all the additional proceeds. The the pirates wouldn't have an opportunity, and that's what we're asking for. We save one, and what we're asking for, the change in the doors of laws, to be able to make it so we can protect seniors. And above a certain age, that you change it so that it's required to have the judicial foreclosure process for doors. And the audience, we. But thank you for coming here. And do present it. Thank you, Oscar. Good to see you again. Um, but this is your neck, Richard, and I don't think anybody can make an argument that, um, we will fight for Marl, we can prove.